Please rise out for the invocation by Reverend Jay Robinson, Pastor of Vumont Baptist Church.
Good evening. On behalf of the Vumont Baptist family and the ministers of this community, let me thank those of you that are part of the council, Mr. Mayor, and other city servants that are here. We pledge to our prayers not just this night, but on many other nights as well. Would you bow with me forward a prayer? Dear God, Creator of all things seen and unseen, with knowledge as infinite as space, remind us, Lord, that we seek You, and that as we seek You, we seek Your presence not just in our lives, but in the lives of those around us as well. Some of us, Lord, are afraid of government. I pray that we will find Your peace. Others are afraid of their own neighbors. I pray that You will touch their lives with unwavering peace. Many of us are hurt and feel fragmented. I pray that those of us who are in such disorder may find comfort in Your Spirit. I pray that whatever wrongdoing we have done against brothers and sisters, or even to strangers, that we would find forgiveness, and that we would be forgiving people as well. I pray that You will grant us all strength to carry out Your purpose for our lives, that we might be a blessing to Your kingdom. I pray for those that are suffering in our community. May You visit them, and may we visit them with comfort and support. I pray that we might be reminded that we are all children of the Most High, and that we are far better together than we ever would be apart. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pray for the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I was running, not late, but I was getting close, because, and I think all of you will appreciate this, I was that close to getting to see, to getting to see Tom Lundey kiss a pig. Tom Lundey's the county manager, in case you don't know. And we can learn a lot about that. I've got an idea for a manager kissing a pig next year to promote United Way. We have again, one of my favorite times, recognition of some of our wonderful businesses here in Hickory. And with that, I'm going to call on Dave Paste.
Had to write it down, because I know I won't be able to remember it all. Good evening. I'm Dave Paste. I'm here representing the Business Development Committee, also known as the BDC. We're a team of community volunteers who advise the city on business-related opportunities. Our mission is to identify ideas which could directly or indirectly grow our economy, and make recommendations about those ideas to our elected officials and city staff. In the frequent rush to find new business opportunities, we can forget about those enterprises who sustain us. As an extension of the "Life Well-Crafted" campaign, Hickory established the Business Well-Crafted Award, to recognize and thank those businesses and their employees who have influenced this community for generations and continue to do so today. This award honors a business that has been operating in the Hickory area for at least 75 years. Today, we would like to honor one of the direct descendants of a business that has been a big part of the Hickory community life for more than 130 years. Since 1880, generations of Hickory men and women have worked for Schuford Mills somewhere in the Catawba Valley. They and their families helped shape the community we are today. We all know that times change. The business climate always evolves, even for successful, century-old companies. Sure Tape Technologies LLC was the result of the difficult but wise recognition that the core textile industry for Schuford Mills in America was in permanent decline, but that the subsidiary tape and adhesive division was large, growing, and profitable. In 1996, Sure Tape Technologies LLC was split from Schuford Mills, and reborn as an independent business, free to succeed without the liabilities of her parent. Since the rebirth, Sure Terp Tape has grown into a global corporation of 15 facilities in eight countries with a reputation as an industry leader. You're all familiar with their most famous brand, the Duck brand of Duck Tape. Today, Sure Tape Technologies employs 700 people locally. Together with their families, they represent several thousand of our citizens. This new company is built on the roots of an old business, and continues to help craft life in Hickory. There is no material award which could properly represent the value you and your employees bring to our community. If there was, it wouldn't fit into the budget anyway. Since it's impossible to ever repay what your company has given us, all we can do is say, "Thank you for your gift." As a token of our esteem, we do have a rather shiny plaque to get you.
And I'd just like to say that that Sure Tape has very much enjoyed doing business in the community. As was mentioned, a lot of change. We're a different business, different company altogether than we were. And it's been the resiliency of this community and our employees that have made that possible. So for that, we're very appreciative. So thank you very much. Yes, go ahead. Get the committee in there. Steven also serves as chairman of our Reinventing Spaces Committee of Innovate Catawba, which is an integral part of what we're trying to do with Inspiring Spaces here. Thank you, Steven. And one of the executives at Schuford is also serving this year as president of the Pressure Sensitive Tape Association internationally. So we're very proud of that. And, you know, things like that really spread the word about Hickory, and we are very proud of that. David Walker. Run and sitter. I talked about, we were both with competing Big Eight accounting firms. So we talked to each other like that.
Given the people you had at your firm, I think you guys did a good job.
Listen to this.
Mr. Mayor and the city manager, some of you, of course, who I know personally, thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm here at the request of Neil Organe. Neil is chairman. I am the past chairman of the Community Relations Council. She is current chairman and could not be here. Our prayers should go out to her and John. John lost his father recently, two nights ago, to pancreatic cancer. So with that in mind, I have been given the, at her behest, the great opportunity to give and feed three great people under the banner of Extra Mile Award. Did you have something you wanted to say before this in proclamation?
No, sir. This is your show. We appreciate you.
All right. Let's start with you, Edward, if you could. Come on up here. I know it's embarrassing for you, but you really deserve this. Thanks, everybody here. This is Edward Alexander Rogers. He has been a member of the Ridgewood community for 50 years. As a high school student, he is remembered as a fair but fierce competitor on the football team. If you take the clock back 50 years, everyone in this room recognizes that our race relations were anything but good. It was truly a dark time in our cultural history. In spite of the times, Edward Rogers developed a loving and kind character, demonstrated up to this day by accepting and owning the teachers of his church, St. Paul AME Zion, giving food to those who had none, money when they needed it, support to those who lost a family member, gas for their cars, all without regard to their race or who they were, and without the means to do so. He gave what he had. This whole community has been quietly served by this gentle man of faith, who, were if asked, would give all to anyone he had. Thank you so much for your service to the community.
I thank you all for your work.
Next, I'd like to give this, the individual award for the extra mile, to Dr. Brian Veerling. Brian, a doctor and general practitioner, began to involve himself in the Hickory YMCA program in 2004. The travel soccer program had existed in Hickory for quite some time, yet it only had one team or so in 2007. Dr. Veerling volunteered to run the program in 2008, and by that time, there were two teams and about 30 kids. There were four volunteer coaches. Through Brian's leadership, Brian, come up here. Through Brian's leadership, the program has grown to an elected board of eight volunteers, about 30 coaches, and one staff member for YMCA Catawba Valley, which serves as a financial agent. His 2012 and '13 budget was $40,000. Players and families served have grown to approximately 130 with 12 teams, probably bigger than that now, Brian. His teams are well-coached and competitive. Good character and sportmanship are celebrated over wins. Important to the consideration of this award is the outreach Dr. Veerling began to the wider diverse community youth who are not a part of the organized soccer program. It is quite common for Brian and other coaches to drive two or three kids home when their parents are not available. I've been on some of those later-night cruises. A significant part of the success has included coaching education of the coaches through the YMCA. In addition to the travel numbers above, recreational soccer at YMCA has grown from 500 participants annually to over 1,200. The success of his efforts, though indeed remarkable, has caused the soccer facility to overwhelm the current available field space. Undaunted, Brian, at the start of 2013, you embarked on a project to build two field complexes adjacent to the current field space at Carnival Y. You will hear more about this perhaps in the future. A very busy doctor, father of two and husband, who took a small soccer program with a local focus to a well-run community, broad-based and diverse program. He fulfills the mission of the Community Relations Council on an individual basis. I give you Dr. Veerling.
Mayor, members of the council, community, all I can say is I love being here. I think we have a really special community, and it means very much to me to be recognized as someone who makes a difference and helps make this place better. We'll be playing on the brand-new two soccer fields in February.
Lastly, the last award would go to Peggy Schuford and Elaine Young. These are both people I know very well and care about very much. They came to realize that many children in the Vumont School, as well as other schoolchildren in other areas around Hickory, came to school hungry. They understood that being hungry and learning not only does not go together, but inhibits the learning process. In the areas of underserved, they came to understand that onsite, through onsite visits, that the problem in those areas was even worse. They took action and owned the problem. They didn't just talk about it. They researched the problem and the depth of the hunger problem, determined where the gaps in the current system were, and let these children fall through. They discovered many mothers and fathers were out of jobs and could not even afford the gas to go to market, even with food stamps. They reviewed current programs and visited the port system work in Charlotte. They obtained the rights to the program for Hickory, calling it people offering relief from community hunger. They researched the need further, and reached out to the African-American and our cultural Hispanic population. They developed and recruited volunteer neighbors, coordinators, arranged for a building for food distribution, and developed with the school systems a voucher for distribution to the community in need. They called the initiative "One Can, We Can." Manage the recruiting volunteers to canvass initial local Vumont residences, solicit participation, leave one can on your porch. I had an OI been on my wife with trips all around our neighborhood. I have my own assignment with her. Trial runs were made with great success, as the volunteers picked up what turned out to be bags of cans for delivery to the donated building. Cans were dated, checked, and bagged for distribution. Word was sent out to redeem the vouchers distributed through the school system. The response was large. The bags contained an estimated worth of $50 or so or more. The system is now expanding to more neighborhoods and porches feeding more and more children, with special focus in Ridgeview and Mountainside. Porch is beginning to receive small monetary gifts without solicitation, and gratitude for the program. Peggy Schuford and Elaine Young started with an idea and a heartfelt understanding of the need for many schoolchildren, and it was studying their educational growth. Believe me, when I met with them, they had the passion, and I could feel it. They received no pay and had up to 60 volunteers, and are selfless, hard-working members of the Hickey community who donated their time, researched, tested, built, and delivered food to our next generation of Hickey residents, and enabled many more to fully realize their potential educationally. Both Peggy and Elaine's mantra was, "We can't allow this." Now Peggy is not here tonight because they're traveling with Pope, but here to accept this award on their behalf is Elaine Young, my friend. Elaine, please.
On behalf of Peggy, who would love to be here, and also Shawna O'Brien, who is our executive director, she does all of our paperwork and keeps us straight. I would like to thank the community. You have been wonderful, city volunteers. We have about 800 people who give food by leaving it on their porch once a month. Today happened to be porch day. We started collecting food at 8:15 this morning till 12:15. We packed the bags, we loaded the cars, and that food is distributed on the same day. And thank you so much for being recognized for this final award. Thanks to you.
What wonderful stories. We have some St. Stephen students here on a civics assignment. I'm going to ask if they'll introduce themselves, just your names, please. You don't have to make a speech.
Hi, I'm Jennifer. I'm asking my...
Julia Peron.
Okay.
Tyler Watts.
I'm Allison Straser.
Darren Fox.
Logan Miller.
Ashley Freeman.
Taylor Fleming.
Hannah Slate.
Michael Lake.
Santana Wilson.
Holden Coon.
Ervin Alonata.
The weather's popping up, and I'm looking back and forth. Waka-mole. I'm thinking waka-mole, okay? Guys, that's fantastic. Any other school groups present? Hey, I'll tell you what. I don't know when I've sat through 15 minutes of things so uplifting as we have enjoyed here tonight. We, I'm going to talk a little bit at the end about the wonderful reaction we got from the National North Carolina League of Municipalities to be in here in Hickory, and going around and seeing the things we're doing in the inspiring spaces. And I am so proud of this city. I'm proud of our staff and the wonderful job they did. And we're going to talk about that a little more. With that, we have requesting to be heard, Mr. Cliffman.
Mr. Mayor, before we get to requests, yeah, we've got the presentation of the audit report.
The audit report, yeah.
So with that, I'll call on the city's independent auditor, Paula Hodge, who's the audit partner with Martin Skarnes and associate, and she will present the city's comprehensive annual financial report for the year that ended June 30th, 2013. Todd?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm pleased to be here tonight to present the city's June 30, 2013 audit results. And we have prepared a brief presentation for you that takes information from your audited financial statements and highlights what we believe is the most important for you. Before I begin, I'd like to take just a minute to thank the city staff for their assistance during the audit process. We found them to be very cooperative and knowledgeable, and we appreciate their efforts on gathering all the information that we require to conduct our audit. So thank you to them. And I'll go ahead and get started. Our opinion, which is what you engage us to do, was unmodified. And what that means is that there were no areas in which we, as your audit firm and members of management, could not agree as it relates to the information that you find in your audited financial statements. So in other words, the city received a clean report. It's the best opinion you can receive. The city's financial statements look a little different this year than they did last year, and that's because the city implemented two new reporting standards, GASP-63 and GASP-65, and that changed mainly terminology within the city's report. So you'll notice that as you go through it. The rest of the information in my presentation is your information. It comes straight from your audited financial statements. The city's general fund ended June 30, 2013, with an increase in fund balance of $228,000. We have a general fund summary which shows the city's expenditures and revenues for 2013 as compared to 2012. And as we go further along in the presentation, we'll discuss some of these revenues and expenditures that make up these amounts. As I said before, the general fund fund balance increased for 2013. This gives you a picture of where the fund balance stood for 2011, 2012, and 2013. My next series of slides takes the city's most important revenue sources and compares 2013 to 2012. You can see ad valorem taxes increased for 2013, as did other taxes, while sales and services decreased. I have the same information for the city's expenditures or services that it provides to its citizens. The city spends most of its money for public safety. You can see that public safety increased for 2013, as did general government, as did culture and recreation. When we look at the health of the city's enterprise funds, we look at them differently than we do the general fund. One of the things that we look at is cash flow from operations. And cash flow from operations tells you everything that is left over from operations to fund things like debt service, or capital repairs, things of that nature. We also look at unrestricted net position, which is the fund's unrestricted equity. So you can see where the water and sewer, the transportation fund, and the solid waste fund ended for June 30, 2013. And that's all I have for you tonight, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer this for you.
Before we get to questions, I would like to point out that we have an audit committee of the city council comprising Mr. Lael, Mr. Guest, and myself. We meet with the auditors. Although their work largely is with our staff, the auditors understand that they report to the taxpayers and voters of Hickory, as evidenced by our representation. We have a private meeting with them to make sure they have an opportunity to, in a comfortable environment, to tell us anything that they think we ought to know about our city and its management. And I'm pleased to say that, once again, we are proud that we've had a very satisfactory relationship with our auditors. The books were kept in a fashion that did not require any adjustments. And we have the best auditors for governmental units in the state of North Carolina, right here in Hickory. I think, I don't think that's just me saying it. I think they're recognized as the leading auditors of governmental units in the state. And they're consistently rated as one of the best accounting firms and companies to work for in the United States. So we're pleased with all aspects of the audit. We're pleased with the financial results. Once again, we are very strong. On normal repayment schedule, we could pay off all of our debt in seven years, except the bonded debt for the sewer plant, for example. Before we get to questions, Mr. Guest, do you have anything you'd like to add? Any questions of the auditors? Well, once again, you've done a great job. We will qualify for the Certificate of Conformity in Financial Reporting issued by the...
By the Governmental Finance Officers Association.
GFAO, okay.
Right. The city can, they qualify each and every year. You'll submit that to them in December, and they'll review the city's financial report. The local government commission has reviewed the city's financial report and accepted it with no changes, so.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank your staff, and we appreciate the good report.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments, and we appreciate the opportunity to serve as the city's auditors. Thank you.
Well, I didn't think we could talk the other presentations, but we just about did. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Crone, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Cliffman, 2925 Eighth Street Court, Northeast Hickory, North Carolina. I have appeared before you on a number of occasions, of course, and you're aware of it, and I don't want to be repetitive so much as to bring some additional insight and information that came to me with regard to broadcasting the video of this session of our council. And during the primary campaigns, it came to my attention, attending many of the forums and the events that, in fact, all of them, that I could get to, which was almost all of them, is that at least two of the candidates running for mayor, and several of the candidates as well, I think all but one running for city council, have expressed in those forums a desire and an interest in seeing this body have their, the council meetings put on the Charter Cable Public Access Channel. And I was, and when it was brought up, the question was brought up at each of those things, the audience reacted, especially at LRU, with applause and with that idea. And I think it is still, and I come before you again to advocate for that idea. I think we do a great job of looking at the video that is presented. I think it would be great. I know that it is a desire of mine and others and you to make this as transparent and as open a part of government as anywhere in the state and the county, of course. Lastly, I was struck tonight by another reason that I hadn't even thought of before. Like you, Mr. Mayor, I cannot imagine anything more uplifting and more appropriate to have out in the community in even a larger way than the people who are fortunate enough, like me, to be here tonight to hear about these activities that people are pursuing in our city that benefit so many people. So I would just like to say, I would like to urge you again, as a council, to consider doing this and doing it as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Well, I have strong opinions on that too, but since this is, that would be political, I'm going to leave it out of this meeting, okay? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of October 1st?
Number 2nd.
We have a, I've got a motion by Mrs. Patton, second, by Mrs. Fox. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. It's unanimous. All members are present, except Mr. Lael, who is taking his daughter to, back to school. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading?
Make a motion, second.
All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion was by Mr. Guest, second by Mr. Seaver. Anything to be removed from the consent? Anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
Mayor, if you could remove I, J, K, L, I'm going to let Ms. Dula sit in to answer any questions about those cemetery deeds that were drafted by my firm.
Remove approval of the consent agenda with the exception of items I, J, K, and L.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Meisner, 2nd, by Mrs. Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Do we need to have anything except the recognition that Mr. Crone recused himself in effect?
No.
I make a motion, we approve I, J, K, and L, which have to do with transfer of cemetery deeds.
Second.
Motion by Wright, 2nd, by Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you, Mrs. Dula. Departmental report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First department report. I'll ask the city's community development manager, Mr. Dave Leonetti, to come to podium and to present to council a recommendation for a vacant building revitalization grant to Piedmont Wagon Properties.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Berry, Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Crone. Tonight, I'm here to present a vacant building grant application for the Piedmont Wagon Company building. It's located over in Northwest Hickory, just north of the railroad tracks. It's the oldest manufacturing building that was built originally for manufacturing that's still standing in Hickory, and it is one of our local historic landmarks. To give you a little background on the program, the program allows for grants of up to $30,000 or 15% of eligible project costs for the restoration or demolition of vacant buildings. This is the fourth vacant building revitalization grant that was, that has been brought to your attention, and then there were three additional demolition grants that have gone before the council before. For the three projects before this one that have been undertaken, the $30,000 for three grants, the $90,000 has leveraged almost $15 million in private investment in these three projects, and that does not include the proposed project that you're about to consider tonight. Like I said, the project is located at 1020 Main Avenue Northwest. It's roughly 35,000 square foot former manufacturing building. It was originally a wagon company that made covered wagons and wagons for farm equipment, and after the automobile became popular, they diversified into wagons for more recreational uses. Then the building was eventually sold, and it housed a number of different things over the years. Hosiery Company had warehouse space there. Most recently, there was actually a dental laboratory there at one point as well, and a spring manufacturer that you'll see a photograph of. The estimated redevelopment cost is more than $2.3 million, so this would make the property eligible for the maximum $30,000 grant. This project is listed on the National Register of Historic Places and is also a local historic landmark. The Hickory Historic Preservation Commission is going to be considering the certificate of appropriateness for this restoration next week at their meeting. The owner plans to use this building for office use. Richard Swartzell is the owner of Cornerstone United, or the managing partner of Cornerstone United, and he's here as well if you have any questions for him. This is a photograph of the property circa 1970. This is somewhat similar to what you'll, it's going to be brought back to with a couple of changes that I'll mention in the elevations that we have. But you'll notice that there's an awning over a rail loading dock, and all of the windows in the property now have been bricked over, and the awning and loading dock have been removed. This is the way the building looks currently. This picture was taken probably about a few months back. And this is another photograph of the rear of the property. This small wood frame addition that's deteriorated quite a bit is actually going to be demolished as part of the redevelopment project. We've talked a lot with Patrick Daly over at the Landmark Society and looking back through from tavern to town, some of the other historical documents, there's not a whole lot of significance associated with that small addition. So, there's really not a lot of opposition, I don't think, at the state level for approving the tax credits or at the local level with the commission for tearing that down. This is the front elevation of the proposed redevelopment. Couple of things that I wanted to point out was reconstruction of the awning and the rail dock, as well as opening up a number of windows that are currently bricked in. If you go back, you'll notice that there's a few more bricked-in windows on there that will not actually be opened up because they were actually added at a point after the original. They're trying to take this back as close to the 1907 Sanborn map as possible, so those additional windows were actually added at a later time. They're adding a metal roof, which is what the Sanborn map, the fire insurance map, believes that was on there at that time. And you'll also see additions of windows in the cupulas on the rear of the property. You can see they're currently kind of tar-papered over and boarded up at this point, so that'll let some light into the upper story of that building. Another feature to note would be this balcony here. They're adding a balcony and opening up on the side of the property. There was formerly a walkway that connected this building to the rest of the complex, so they're putting a balcony there and opening up to show what the door looked like there originally. And there are two entryway doors roughly here and here that were added probably mid-century. We're not exactly sure when that they're planning on removing. And just on the front side of the building, just leaving the main dock entrance that was there previously. The rear of the property, they're adding, they're planning to add some fire shutters that were originally present. Beyond that, there's not a whole lot of change on that, so. With that, the Business Development Committee has reviewed the application and recommends approval. Either myself or Mr. Swartzell would be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Could you go back a few slides?
Sure.
The very first one of the bill.
That's actually the side elevation, too. I don't know why I wrote rear on that one.
Some more. That '59 Cadillac could probably double the value of it.
That's before you were born, Mr. Lee.
Was that George Murphy's car?
I don't have any questions, but I just have a few comments. This is so exciting. I commend the owner and what you're endeavoring to do. I worked very closely with the West Hickory-Westmont Neighborhood Group, and that is such an important part of the history of West Hickory. I'm also excited that this is another great example of a public-private partnership, and I'm really proud of our operation of vacancy and what has resulted from this program, and I commend staff, Dave, you particularly for giving the energy and the time to this program, and hopefully, in the future, we'll be able to restore even more landmarks.
And I look at the amount of money that we put into it versus what we get out of it, and it's truly amazing that this is what Operation of Vacancy was supposed to do and has spurred lots of development. I think a lot more's coming, so I'd like, Ms. Fox, thank you very much.
And that's a good start for that area, too. I mean, it really is.
Oh, yeah. There's a lot of potential there.
Yes.
Well, the other thing is $30,000, and they're going to grow 16 jobs. That works out to less than $2,000 per job, which is outrageously low in relation to economic development across this state and country. And I'm really proud. I've gotten to know the folks over there, and I'm really proud that, they said they want this to be the Piedmont Wagon building and not Cornerstone United building. And Richard said to me, he said, "We want to tell people how to find the Piedmont Wagon building, and by the way, Cornerstone United is in that." The other thing about the creation of these jobs is these are jobs that provide skills for the employees that, in customer service and computers and mechanical, that will serve them well and many other jobs if they choose to take another job at some point. With that, are there any other questions?
I just think it's wonderful seeing the domino effect of what we have done over at Holler and what's happening over in that side. And like Mr. Meisner, it's the start of something really good in the Westmont area.
Well, I'd like to do the approval of the grant.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Seaver, 2nd, by Mrs. Fox. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Financial report?
Mr. Mayor, I'll call on the city's assistant city manager and chief financial officer, Mr. Warren Wood, to present the quarterly financial report.
Mayor Wright, members of the city council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone. Just to follow up a little bit with the annual audit, we've received an email from the State Treasurer's Office about 3:30 this afternoon that they have received and approved our audit with no questions or issues. So, we have to submit the audit every year to the State Treasurer's, and they review it to make sure everything's okay, so that's good news that we got this afternoon. Looking at the audit, I mean, it can be somewhat intimidating if you've ever flipped through it. There's a lot of numbers in there. It sometimes doesn't flow very well, but a lot of good information. And what I'd like to do, starting out, is just kind of walk through, when I anxiously anticipate and receive the audit every year, some of the things that I look at just right out of the gate initially to see how we did. Obviously, as Paula mentioned earlier, the very first thing, was it an unmodified opinion? Meaning, that's the highest opinion the auditor can give, and yes, this audit was. Then the second thing we generally look at is what happened to fund balance. Now, she mentioned that your fund balance in the general fund increased $230,000. That's all fund balance within the general fund. What we really focus on oftentimes is your unassigned fund balance, which is funds that are unobligated or unassigned for any particular purpose. Think of it as your savings account. So, we look at what happened to that during the year. Did we put a little money in the bank? Now, on a $44, $45 million general fund budget this year, we put 1.1 million aside. So, that's about a 2%, 2.5% number compared to the overall budget. So, that's good. And what did that do to your fund balance percentage? In your annual financial policies, you have a stated goal of wanting to maintain a 25% fund balance in the general fund, and that represents about three months of operating expenses in the general fund. So, with this addition, that puts you up to over 20, or just over 29%. This increase of 1.1 million was almost exclusively done by watching expenditures on the expenditure side of the ledger versus revenues. And I'll give you an example, or I'll demonstrate this. If you look at our top seven revenues in the general fund, that totals about $36 million out of the $44 million budget. It's about 80% of the budget. We exceeded budget in those seven revenues by $4,000. So, that's how, ordinarily, what you'd like to see is a lot of growth in your revenues to put money in, put money into fund balance. What we're seeing is we're really trying to control expenditures to put money in fund balance. So, say that one more time. Of our seven biggest revenues, we met budget or exceeded budget by $4,000 on $36 million. So, that's cutting it close, but we did good, and that has not been the case the last few years. This has been the first time in about three years that that's happened, that we were falling below our revenue estimates. So, that's good news. It looks like our revenue picture is starting to stabilize. Back to this, and back to this $1.1 million, most of that was done on the expenditure side with personnel and the hiring freeze. We averaged about 35 vacancies during the course of the last fiscal year. We're starting to loosen that up a little bit. We're down to about 30 vacancies. So, we'll slowly, as things seem to start improving somewhat, start tapering that back, but we're not doing that yet. We're going to get a few more months under our belt to see how things go. So, that's explaining how we created a little bit of a surplus in your general fund. And just to give you an idea, we've already have designs on this $1.1 million. Just to give you a few things that we know are out there, there's going to be a major economic development project coming forward in the next few months that will require some unbudgeted funds. We have another public-private partnership that will be coming forward to you the next month or so that will require some money. And also, obviously, the storm damage this past summer will require a piece of this as well. So, you've got a little leeway here to still stay above or around the 25%, and you could utilize these $1.1 million for those activities and still maintain your 25% goal. So, that's good. Moving forward, other things that we look at, the number of days the city could operate with cash on hand, that increased from 268 days to 289 days. So, that's a good measure that we look at. Additionally, some highlights, our city's total net assets, that's the value of all the lands, buildings, cash, all our assets, and it's basically a simple calculation, is the value of what we own minus what we owe. It increased by $2.4 million to $205 million. So, that's water plants, airport, everything. So, that's good. Additionally, your property tax base increased by one-half of 1%. We'd like to see this number, you know, 2.5%, 3%. We're not seeing that, but again, this is a positive number. The previous two years, we had declined in our property tax base, so we saw some stabilization this past year, and that was an increase of 25 million in value. So, your total property tax value now is just over $4.7 billion. So, that's good. And finally, another thing we really focus on is the property tax collection rate. It increased from 95.9% up to 96.2%. For every tenth of a percent change in the collection rate, it equals to $25,000 in current year collections. So, this increase in the collection rate resulted in about $75,000 in additional current year collections. So, that's good.
Was that just the property tax?
That's just property tax, correct. So, those are some audit highlights that we look at when we get the audit report.
Well, we have invested heavily over the last few years in fire and police, right? We've had to watch our dollars in a lot of ways, but I've had several people point out the interesting article about the investment we make in uniforms for each fireman. And of course, what I've said is, well, we want them to be able to be safe and they have time to protect us. But we've added substantial fire capability at substantial cost, and we've still held the line on our expenditures.
Yeah, the breathing apparatus alone that we replaced the last couple of years was hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, yeah, it's an expensive investment, but it is worth the sake.
But we've added a lot of firefighters and a big fire truck.
Yes, we have, and I remind them of that all the time. But y'all do a great job.
Just in case you hadn't mentioned it lately.
I do tell Chief Atkins, they are America's heroes over there, so. Moving to the general fund, we're three months into the fiscal year, 25% of the year complete. Just looking at our revenues, or revenues that we've received year-to-date, we're at 21% through the first three months of the fiscal year. The five-year average says we ought to be at about 19%. So, we're doing a little better than the five-year average. So far, so good with our revenues in the general fund. On the expenditure side, we have spent or encumbered 27% of our budgeted revenues, and the five-year average says that's about where we ought to be. So, when you take, when you take the encumbrances out and just look at revenues over expenditures, we have spent $813,000 more than we've collected, but our five-year average says we should have spent $2.1 million more. So, that's a good start for the first three months of the fiscal year. That's a good sign.
We don't have any sales tax numbers in that, though, do we?
There's one, one or two, one distribution so far.
And it was okay?
Yeah, it was about flat, but that's what we're seeing on the revenue side.
Yeah, flat.
Yes. Mr. Lael says it's flat as the new up, so, yes. Moving to the water and sewer fund, and it's your second largest fund. It's a $20 million fund with 25% of the year complete. We'll take a look at the same numbers here. We've received 21% of the budgeted revenues in the water and sewer fund. The five-year average says we ought to be at about 22%. We're a little behind there, but on the expenditure side, we have spent or encumbered about 26% of our budgeted revenues. The five-year average says we should have spent or encumbered over 28%. So, again, taking the encumbrances out, just looking strictly at revenues over expenditures, we have collected $1.6 million more than we've spent. The five-year average says we ought to be, we should have spent $600,000 more than we've collected. So, again, a very good start to the water and sewer fund for the first three months. So, both the general fund and the water and sewer fund, we feel pretty good about. You know, we'll do this again. You know, we'll do this again in January and we'll, we'll see how we're doing through the half of the year. Just one final, any questions so far? Just one final slide. We focus a lot on building permit values. This is comparing the first three months of all these various fiscal years. Had a very good first three months in building permit values issued by building inspections. We're almost at $22 million and that's equivalent to the, you know, back here in '06, '07, '08. Those were years where we issued over $100 million in building permits. Now, again, we'll be back in January, we'll have three more months, we'll see how we're doing, but that's a very strong start and you can see what the trend had been the last few years, but a very strong start in building permitting first three months of this fiscal year.
You know, '09 and '10 is pretty high, when they're an outlier that caused that.
Yeah, that was a $20 million hospital permit issued at the Tallahassee Medical Center. That was not, it's not taxable property, but it's reflected as a permitting number.
But no such item in this year, right?
No, no, this is all, oops, this is all a variety of different things. So we're so far, so good. That's, that's all I have.
Well, I, I'd like to say that we, we hear a lot of angst from cities nationally and some in North Carolina over the shutdown. And today I got a transmitter from the National League of Cities talking about some cities in some degree of, of distress or concern and we have issues there too. For example, our bus system is heavily federal funded, but I feel very good that we're in good enough financial position that we're not approaching anything like angst or, or distress.
I'd like to thank Melissa Miller, Amanda Stanley and their staff and the Finance Department for all the work they did putting the budget together. They do all the grunt work that makes it, makes it easy for the auditors, but that's a lot of hard work that they do and I appreciate it.
It's kind of a caveat to what you were just saying. Depending on what happens the rest of this week, if we go into default, does that immediately or, I mean, is there, I know you don't have a crystal ball or anything like that, but is there any concerns or anything that we should be maybe looking at related to that?
Well, specifically if we go into default. Is there any, there's not, I mean... Well, I, I would say that I think something that, that puts us in pretty good stead is we don't, we don't have any immediate urgent borrowing needs and we have, over the last few years, we have refinanced our debt on very favorable terms, probably as good as, as we could possibly be in at this point. So I'd say we are better positioned than about anybody you might hear about. And our, our interest rates are all fixed. We don't have to worry about fluctuating interest rates. Unfortunately, they're fixed on our investments too, but we're, we're about as good there as anybody. I'd like to appoint Mrs. Lester May Clark as tenant representative to the Public Housing Authority Board. Any other appointments? Matter's not on the agenda? Oh, excuse me. I made a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion to appoint Mrs. Lester May Clark, second by Mrs. Patton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, that's unanimous. We just concluded a very successful convention of the North Carolina League of Municipalities at the Convention Center. That is one of the most prestigious conventions in the state of North Carolina every year. We're proud to be in the rotation and I always like to recognize Hamilton Ward, former Ward One Council member who got us in that rotation. And then our staff do such a good job that everybody says, "We want to go back to Hickory. We want to come back." We had a wonderful time on, at the opening event on Sunday night, dancing to the extraordinaires, local Hickory group, on the lawn between the art museum and the salt block and the library. And the museum and the science center were open, so people were getting tours and getting to see what we have there. Everyone was amazed that that's almost exclusively privately funded. People were just amazed. They kept saying, "How much money does the City of Hickory put in this?" And we were able to say, "A moderate amount."
Too, I think that Lady Elks, I want to thank them for their volunteer work and the staff was, I have had so many people say, everyone was just bent over backwards to make sure everyone had a really good time and it, it was a great event.
And the science museum staff.
Yeah.
The art museum staff.
The library staff.
Our police department.
All of them.
Fire department.
Streets.
Don't leave them out.
Streets.
Yeah.
Everybody.
You know, we, oh, the whole city committee, let's just read this. Mandy Pitts, Mick Berry, Terry Clark at the airport, John Crone, thank you, John, Yade Fox, Louise.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Mr. Berry, I noticed I gave, I gave them all the night off. They're all sleeping.
When I saw her last about two o'clock, she said, "I don't think I'm gonna make the meeting." Louise Humphrey, Steve Miller, the street manager, Gary Lee, Derek Martin, deputy fire chief, Chuck Hanson.
Yeah, they're all...
Chuck never misses. Okay. Andrea Surratt, she's here, Dee Blackwell with the COG, and then a number of people from the Convention Center and the TDA. Leozos, as always, I can't say enough, they just did a wonderful job. Well, there's Louise. You're not exhausted. They did a great job and, but they couldn't get over, they couldn't get over what we had to show them when we took them on the Inspiring Spaces tour. And like I think Mrs. Patton said, Mrs. Fox, I guess, it's sort of like dominos. Somebody sees what we've done, they hear how it was funded and they say, you know, "I think I'll try that with my building." And that is the, when you, and, and to think that we're in the very early stages of that. Just think what we can accomplish here. Any other comments?
The street division had, I thought was to be commended because they remotes that interchange and it looked great.
I'll, I'll tell you a funny story if I may, since we, it's not quite eight. Now, I always say, the accounting department, the finance department, the budget people, they don't get any recognition. Nobody writes a letter to the editor talking about the great service we've getting out of the accounting department. But they also don't get the other kind of letters. And a couple of weeks ago, I was, I was out at West End BBQ about 5:30 in the morning and I opened the paper. Well, I'm not going to say exactly what the letter said because it has sort of a political connotation, but it had to do with people who could get potholes fixed. And about that time, the street crew came in. So I said, "Who's in charge of the pothole?" And they all, they immediately, right back. And so, but we, we had fun joking about that and the fact that the street department made it to the newspaper, okay?
I do want to bring up too, the Carolina Cycle Challenge was a huge success two Sundays ago and we had over 700 registered riders and streets again were one that were mentioned wholeheartedly, doing just a super job policing fire, just the collaboration with the YMCA and just the momentum going and it is of course the form of Brett's ride and it had tremendous support by the Gosnell family and it's just, we appreciate the city's involvement in it too with the Rotary groups here in Hickory and it was a fantastic Sunday morning. Great weather too.
Well, part, part of that story about the street crew also was when I told Mr. Berry the story, he said, "What's the street crew doing out there at 5:30 in the morning?" And they were having breakfast, which was really their lunch because they'd already worked three or four hours. And one of them told me, I said, "What are y'all doing out this early working?" He said, "I guess I can tell this." He said, "We've got to get everything in shape for these big shots coming in here." So we had a great, great exchange and we've got wonderful staff at every level and we can be proud of them. They make the council look good.
Also Oktoberfest was a huge success. I had the pleasure as well, I know many of you did, going down there and it was jam-packed. There was cars and people everywhere and again, our police and everybody did a fine job and everything was good.
I'm talking about big shots, the Hickory, Hickory Place, this is a false swing. I'll see everybody out there, I'll be on a weekend, March, we're a whole number eight, I believe, in March.
There's still room for volunteer, yes.
I believe that generates about 15 million income for the Hickory community.
It does and I, I'm disappointed that the newspaper did report on the impact of the North Carolina League meeting here as well. Every single October was broken in Hickory for this, three and a half, four days, depending how...
Very difficult time.
Huge, huge impact.
And these, a lot of these people are decision makers in business as well as politics in their hands. They come here and they see what we have and they go back. Only good things are going to happen for Hickory. So I'm glad we have a convention center and I'm glad Hamilton Ward got us in the rotation and I think all of you all have been proud to hear the comments this year. Motion, adjourned? Motion by the guests, second by Seaver, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no, that's unanimous. Thanks to everybody for being here. Thanks to the city for the change.